If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been an executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter and a personnel matter. We could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Lauren Grasso.
Robert Teigen.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbach.
Meredith Corin.
John Wallston.
John McRidles.
And Catherine Natto and you and McNay are unable to be here this evening. Do we have any PIG or SUPA students visiting us tonight squeezing it in before the end of the year? Thank you guys for coming. You need to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever one of those comes first, and don't leave without coming up and signing out on one of the sign out sheets that's up here. You'll need to sign out on one, but that's how you get credit for being here. First is our approval of minutes. And first, it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 7th, 2025 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And second, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 20th, 2025 annual budget vote and Board of Education election. Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Next is our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. First, I just want to thank the community for the successful budget vote. We had a large turnout. I don't know if anyone noticed, but if you compare our voter turnout to many schools around the area, we have a really high percentage of people who come out still. Be great to see more, but it's nice to see everyone and a lot of our alumni. So thank you to the community and congratulations Bob and John for three more years on Board of Education. So that's my first thing. And then next, we have some students here this evening that we want to recognize. So I'm going to ask Mr. Majewski to come on up. We have our stock market challenge winners, and they're going to tell you a little bit about the stock market challenge and what they did. If you didn't see their clip, they were on News Channel 10. Was it 10 a couple of weeks ago?
10.
Yes, so go ahead.
My name's Jason Majewski. I teach economics here at the school, and I also have the pleasure of meeting or working with some students after school with our stock market club. We meet weekly, and I mean, we talk about a lot of different things. A lot of times it ends up being current event type stuff, but how that will ultimately connect to the financial markets, specifically the stock market. I'm more of a just facilitator, but really it's the work of these individuals, these gentlemen here, that really do all the work, and they do a great job. So besides just kind of running the meeting and sharing what they know and teaching more about the financial markets to many students in the building, they also play the stock market game. We play a couple of games throughout the year, and we've had success in the past, but we've never had a one-two punch where we've had two students, one and two in the state. So it's quite an accomplishment, and it's really not about me. I mean, more about just setting it up for them to have this real-life opportunity, but it's the work of these gentlemen. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves and just say a few words because again, it's their accomplishments that's important.
Yeah, and share your strategy.
Specifically.
Yeah, so as Mr. Majewski already said, me and Veer participated in this year's spring SIFMA Foundation Stock Market Game. So it's a short-term sort of game taking place from around January to April 11th, I believe. And over the course of it, me and Veer ended up becoming, he was the first in the state, and I was the second in the state out of around 4,500 participants. Would you like to go into your strategy?
Yeah, so before we get to that, I believe Mahmood forgot to introduce himself. My name's Veer Williams. I'm a senior at BCHS. This is Mahmood Zaimi Mary, also a senior at BCHS. As he said, we placed number one and number two. I ended up with roughly 138,000, starting with 100,000. Mahmood finished at roughly 128,000. As for our strategy, there was significant overlap, as you might imagine, and the main goal for both of us was to go against the markets and ultimately bet against a lot of the speculative investing that's been going on recently, particularly in the tech sector. And as we saw recently, especially uncertainty with tariff policies, considering the fiscal policy that's going on currently. Ultimately, it proved to be profitable to short-sell a lot of companies. We both shorted a lot of companies in the quantum computing industry. That was especially speculative at this time just because they're not quite up and running yet, and the tariffs are definitely impactful in industries that have yet to produce a product. So it's something to consider that when there's a shaky market like what we're experiencing currently, to consider the value of the company that you're investing in, whether or not they have a proven brand. And the companies that we decided to short-sell, which is betting against, ultimately had no products to provide, and they were the first to be hit by the poor conditions in the current markets. Anything to add, Mahmood?
Sure. So as Veer said, I'm sure you guys have seen the volatility recently within maybe your own portfolios, but the time that the market, that the game took place, the market was definitely very interesting and very volatile. So we tried our best to stay updated with all the news and stuff and really tried to figure out what was going on. A lot of times in the short term, you want to focus on how the market is doing overall in the day-by-day, which has a lot to do with consumer sentiment and speculation and just things in the news or rumors that may happen, like a lot of the tariff stuff that has been going on recently. So a lot of it was staying up to date with that and then trying to make the best decisions based on how, how we thought the market would perform based off of different government policies or just consumer sentiment around that time.
And just to cap it off, I think one last message I would say is that many people are wondering what they should do and that given the current market conditions, and I think the answer is nothing. Leave your money in the market. You're probably better off not trading the way that Mahmood and I did, which was very risky. And there is a little bit of luck involved there certainly, so if you come up to me and ask for advice, my answer will always be leave your money in the market, put it in a low-cost index fund, and wait until you're old and you have many years to get to retirement, and over time, compound interest will take over, and this will just be a small little dip on a chart that you won't even notice when you're, when you're looking to retire.
That's awesome. Do you want to picture?
You're old. You're like 30.
I know. I was going to say define old. That was the next question.
He's just relative.
Exactly. So our next room, Mr. Patel, do you want to come up? We have some debate students who are heading to Chicago for their competition this coming weekend, so I'll hopefully give it to Mr. Patel.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Patel. I'm also a teacher here at the high school. I'm the speech and debate advisor, and with me are Molly, Karen, and Sam. And so in speech and debate, they compete usually on Saturdays, usually Saturday morning. And so they get up extra early, and they compete in various competitions. All three of these students specialize in Lincoln Douglas debate, and so throughout the year, they've participated at local and regional tournaments. They also competed at states at Bronx Science, and now they're, two of them are off to Chicago. Sam is eligible, but he's going on the Montreal trip. And so I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about how speech and debate works.
Hi. Okay, I can use this microphone. Awesome. I'm Molly. I am the vice president of speech and debate, and I also run LD, which is Lincoln Douglas Debate. It's sort of based in a combination of philosophy and statistics, which means that these two have consumed probably a good thousand pages each of like academic works this year on literally everything from like Kantian deontology to the Rawlsian difference principle to like the impact of hyper-specific fishing policies off the coast of Antarctica. They're laughing because they know that they read far too much this year. That being said, it paid off. I can't think of a single tournament we didn't win this year, and I think that's solely due to their dedication. I'm a senior. I'm graduating. I had my fun, and they have a crazy year left, like the guarantee. But beyond that, I think that like they just worked so hard, and I'm so grateful to the school for all of the support that they give this activity. I think it's really, really valuable.
I'd also like to speak a little bit. I think Molly sort of short-sold herself a little bit there. So Molly actually won states last year, and running LD is a pretty big thing for us, right? LD is by far the most competitively successful event here with the greatest tournament participation out of any event. And I think, actually, no, I don't think, I know that debate in general, and especially LD, would not exist without Molly. She makes the vast majority of our block files, which is a debate term, and she really coaches us all. My first case ever, I spent around an hour and a half on the phone with Molly around 10:00 PM writing it the week before, and
Night before.
Night before, sorry. And talking about fishing with someone who doesn't know anything about any activity is, is pretty, pretty dedicated. So I'd like to thank Molly, a huge thank you, because we wouldn't be here without her.
Sorry, Sam.
Special prizes.
I do think so, yes. So thanks so much to our teachers who came and our students, and good luck Indy-Chicago. We'll be waiting to hear how everyone does, so, and that's my report.
Awesome. Anybody have questions on those things? For Jody? Next up is our board report. And first, I would also like to thank the community for the support with the budget and congratulate John and Bob, and we're happy to have you guys hanging around. Wish I could offer you a pay raise for the next three years, but. And I also wanted to recognize all the seniors that had art in the art show that was, that is out still in the, in the lobby and going all the way down towards the cafeteria. If you guys haven't had a chance to check it out, I highly recommend it. And I also wanted to commend all the students that participated in the jazz concert last night. I'm always amazed by the musical talents that are in the building. And just a couple of events that are coming up before our next board meeting. On Friday, May 30th, that is when they're doing the API Food Festival in the cafeteria. And then if you want to make it dinner in a show afterwards, is the opening of the 12th night here in V122, and they're performing on Friday, Saturday, and then a Sunday matinee. Anybody have anything else that they want to share?
I just wanted to thank Susan Barber for also running a campaign for, for the board. I think the more participation we have, the more people, it's always great, and I just wanted to send my appreciation out for that because I think it's important for us to have a lot of involvement.
Yeah, I'll second that. I want to thank first the community for coming out to support the budget. Obviously, the more community involvement, the better, and the more informed people are, and the more people are discussing these issues, I think, just the better for the district and for the students, you know, and personally, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve another term and, you know, bring what I can to the board. But again, thanks to the community just for coming out and supporting the school in general, and also thanks to Susie Barber for, I agree, I think it's just good to have folks involved. It gets people talking. It gets the issues raised, and you know, I just think it's a healthy thing for, for a democratic system, and I appreciate her efforts. Thank you so much.
Next, our student reports. Anyone here from the high school student senate? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Niara Baghara from senate.
And I'm Melissa Lenick from senate.
And not much to report. Things have been pretty slow since our last dance, but we're preparing for the upcoming student elections for next year's government and also planning a field trip, no, sorry, a field day for next year to kick off things.
For the beginning of the year?
Yeah, for the beginning, yeah. It would be like the second or third day of school. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next is our presentation this evening. We're having a presentation on our building conditions update and future project plans.
Good evening. Tonight's presentation is to provide the Board of Education with information to consider for the next facility's capital improvement project. We call it the 2025 Capital Bond Project. This will be the first of many presentations that we will, as we progress towards a final project. Okay, so this slide here is just a quick recap of our capital projects that we've, we've done over the last 30 years. It's about $209 million worth of capital improvements district-wide. There's just an asterisk there that in 2021, you may recall that we had two separate capital projects. We went back out to bid for the middle school auditorium, and, but it totaled about $45.5 million. I just wanted to recap the, the project path. When we start the process of a capital project and as we progress, I'll go through this quickly. There's, there's two aspects. It's pre-refundum or pre-public vote, and then there's post-refundum where we design and go to construction. So, you know, first, we start with our needs assessment. We engage our stakeholders, find out what the district needs. We, we work on planning and scope development, work with the business office and our financial advisors for developing the budget, and then we engage the Board of Education, which we're in the process or in the midst of numbers one through five as we speak. And then as, as we move forward, we communicate with the public, we have legal and administrative consultations, and then we go to public vote. So once we, we do that pre-vote, we move on to the next step, which is the real meat and potatoes of the project. There's five elements to a capital bond project. Number one is the schematic design. That's where, you know, we work to establish an overall concept of the project, and when I say the project, that encompasses the whole entire district, each one of our elements. These are just general, early-on design goals with basic layouts, and we start estimating our budget so we can figure out where we're at in a particular place. Next, we move on to design development. That's where architects, they refine the design and begin selecting materials and systems so that we can put it to paper. We incorporate our structural engineers and our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers and start to develop our drawings or our documents. And we update our cost estimates as we proceed. Next to the construction drawings or construction documents, this is where the architect working with the district, they create detailed drawings and specifications required for our contractors to perform the construction. At, at the same time, we submit these drawings and specifications to state ed for their review and approval. The approval, excuse me, at this time, we, we have our best or most accurate cost estimate when we go to SCD for approval. That's followed by step four, which is our bidding and contract negotiations. We publicly advertise, it goes out to bid, and we select qualified contractors to perform the work. And then step five is ongoing. The construction administration starts immediately and ends when we close out the project after the project is built and, and commissioned. All right, so that, that runs all the way to project closeout. The next slide just shows our project team. You may hear me say OACM. That stands for owner, architect, and construction manager. We, when the project gets rolling, we have weekly OACM meetings. The owner obviously is Bethlehem. That includes the Board of Education, our administration, and operations and maintenance. And then we have our architectural team, which includes the design engineers for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, our site engineers, our structural engineers, our hazardous materials consultants, and our kitchen equipment consultants. And again, we can add or subtract these if we have no elements that require those. I just want to point out real quickly that this year, we went out for RFP, for Architecture and Engineering Services. We had a committee, it was approved by the board, that we would retain, Ashley McGrath is our architectural firm. However, they did select a new engineering firm based on some of the district's needs and some of the things that occurred in the past. So all the other consultants are the same as are the project manager at Ashley McGrath, but we will have engineered solutions providing our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And then finally, we're real early in the stages. We have not brought a construction manager on board yet. We'll be asking to do that in the, in the future, once we get a few more of our questions answered. Last year, it was, my goodness. Who was it last year? Turner Construction, my God. That's why I don't like using notes. Because I can't remember. All right, so our construction manager, yeah, I know, was Turner Construction last year. Previously, it was Pike Construction. My apologies for that. So I just want to touch on a couple of options for our capital project timeline. We proposed two options here for the Board of Education to consider. Option number one is a December 2025 vote. We would proceed, as you can see, the timeline shows that the architect engineers conducted surveys, and we updated our building condition surveys and our five-year plan. We use that data to develop our scope list for what we want to build or propose that we want to build in this project. We'll have several Board of Education meetings and presentations to develop the scope. There's going to be some decisions that we're going to request of the Board of Education for us to take action on. And then we would go to the referendum or public vote in December of 2025. The next step would be the project design, those five elements that I discussed, the schematic design, design development, and construction documents. We would expect that in September of '26, those would go to state ed for review. State ed takes about four months to review and approve our, our documents, so that brings us to January of '27, and we could potentially go to So, that brings us to January of twenty-seven, and we could potentially go to construction in April of two thousand twenty-seven. The second option is a May of two thousand twenty-six vote, which aligns with our annual budget vote. Again, the timeline doesn't change much, with the exception of the public vote portion of it. We would work through the remainder of two thousand twenty-five to have everything ready for a public vote in May of two thousand twenty-six. That brings us to our construction documents submitted to SCD in February of two thousand twenty-seven, with an anticipated approval from state ed in June of twenty-seven, which is, I'll say, if we get approval in June of twenty-seven, we're a little late. Obviously, we couldn't do a summer project that in the summer of two thousand twenty-seven. We would most likely go to construction in April of two thousand twenty-eight. There are some project elements. We've had discussions with administration, this is the first time the board is hearing it, that, you know, if we were to be approved in June, we could coordinate and most likely start some of our project elements in the fall and winter of two thousand twenty-seven. However, we'd be limited. We couldn't go full bore unless we wanted to strategize and see how we could do it in occupied buildings. The other, there is a caveat to this, a note, that, you know, one of the drawbacks of the May two thousand twenty-six vote is, again, going to construction in April of twenty-eight. That essentially puts us one year behind schedule. And what I mean by one year, it's not a physical year, but it's a construction year. Most of our construction takes place during the summers. Okay? And we are trying to refine this bond project so that we can accomplish it in two summers. We've demonstrated that about a two-year project, we've been very successful with the past few projects, having these smaller two-year projects. Again, we, once we get a little further along in the process, we can make recommendations. The other issue with a, I say issue, other consideration for a May twenty-six vote is, this would result in an increase in our hard and soft costs. If you recall, our soft costs are engineering fees, construction manager fees, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and the actual hard costs, because it makes the project longer. And our escalation is typically two percent per year, just overall escalation due to inflation and the cost of doing business. So, I just wanted to bring that to light for the board to consider. Again, the limitations, we could do a bunch of chunks, but it may end up costing us a little more because we'd have a remobilization, unless we opted to, you know, move out of a wing or something along that nature. But we're a little early on in the project to discuss that right now. Our capital project funding, you know, touching base with our business official, you know, we obviously have New York State Building Aid. It's approximately seventy percent of our eligible costs, which are our hard costs or the actual construction cost. It does not always apply to certain furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We take that into consideration when we bring this to the board. We also have capital reserves, which would reduce the amount of bonded indebtedness. And again, John and his folks are working alongside our financial advisors to provide that information as we progress. And then, budget neutral, our debt service costs and reserve use could fully offset, could be fully offset by our building aid. So, that's just a real quick snapshot of how we would fund this project. One thing I do want to point out at this moment, we do not have any additional funding sources like we did last bond, such as our American Rescue Plan Act and ESER, like we did to pay for a lot of, some of that furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and some of our outside pavilions. So, some things may pop up, but right now, we're not counting on any outside or additional funding. So, right now, the two thousand twenty-one bond was about two hundred project scope elements. And currently, we are at three hundred and seven on this go-round. We ended up with three hundred and seven scope elements. These were developed from past and current building condition surveys and our five-year plans. So, everything, you know, every five years, we have our building condition surveys. I really struggled with the way I presented the actual printout to the Board of Education and to our administration. I only went back as far as two thousand fifteen building condition survey. And I wanted to demonstrate that this particular element's been hanging out that long. They're still included in the two thousand twenty-five, but I wanted to show that, look, we've had, I'll just pick something simple, this ceiling needed replacement since the two thousand fifteen. So, that may prompt us to maybe move that up on our priority scale or not. So, the way it is presented is it goes back to two thousand fifteen, then two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-five BCS, plus input from all of our stakeholders, changes in code, and the things that were removed from the last capital project. They either increased in priority, or they remain the same, but they're still on the scope elements list. So, we knocked about a hundred of them off last bond, and we gained two hundred this time. So, currently, we did some rough estimating, and we're at about eighty-six point one million dollars in our, as proposed for this project. You know, in working with John and our administration, we think we need to be between the fifty and sixty million dollar budget. Okay? So, obviously, we have some trimming of that to do and some organization of these elements and prioritization. And we're working on that as we speak, as recently as today. We had a meeting with all the, our administration, our architects, our stakeholders, and our ONM teams today to try to refine this. And when I use the term pare it down, it doesn't mean necessarily that we're removing elements. They'll always be there, but we're trying to tailor it to meet our budget needs. So, when I talk about prioritizing project or project elements, we have, this is typical, and this is the way that I recommend to the administration, to the board. First, we look at our life safety and code issues, if we have any that we need to address, followed by program and education, and our envelope and infrastructure. Real quickly, the life safety and code, you know, we're talking about our fire alarms, ADA accessibility, security, and emergency response systems. Our program and education is, it goes without saying, but it's our classroom renovations, library and media centers, athletics, and PE, obviously with a focus on why we're all here, and that's to educate our children, our students. And then the envelope and infrastructure, this is the part that, you know, a lot of people don't see, but, you know, we're paid to make sure that we can keep the lights on and the rain out. So, we have some substantial items that we need to address in this bond. You know, roof replacement being the primary one that we're concerned with right now. We spent a lot of money in the last bond project, making our interior spaces look really nice, and we have some roofs that are beginning to fail. And then the HVAC, plumbing, and electrical infrastructure upgrades, and again, our site drainage, and our outside parking lots and things like that. So, we prioritize those. And then we have a second prioritization, which we internally select as high, medium, and low. And that's how it's presented on the documents that the board has received. So, the three hundred and seven elements, this is just a chart that shows you how they're broken out. You know, as you can see, the high school and middle school being our two largest buildings take up about fifty-four percent of all the project elements. The elementary schools are comparable. They're anywhere from, you know, seven and a half to ten percent of the project. We look at that, and we also weigh the equity across the district, and we're trying to be, SCD would frown if I said we try to standardize, but we want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of each individual building, yet giving everybody the same amount of construction, if at all possible. The next chart is showing how much, right now, our estimated cost of that eighty-six million dollars is broken out between each one of the buildings. And again, the larger buildings obviously have the most elements, which have the most costs. If you look at this chart, again, the elementary schools are very comparable, with the exception of Eagle. And Eagle is lower because it's our most, the newest building that has the least amount of project scope elements required or needed. The biggest thing at Eagle is the roof. So, this slide shows our project's elements by priority. And as I mentioned, these are our high, medium, and low priorities that we developed internally here at the district. The green indicates high priority elements, yellow indicates medium priority, and red indicates the low priority elements. If you look to the bottom right of that, you can see that of the eighty-six million, sixty-seven million of it is what we consider, or we're recommending to be high priority scope elements. So, that being said, you know, we've exceeded our sixty million dollar proposed budget, the fifty to sixty million for the public vote. So, we are, again, meeting on this, we're refining this, revising it. We had very good discussion today on how we want to present this to the board with options that the board can make decisions on. So, we kind of, we're focusing our attention on the high priority scope elements. Obviously, they're high priority for a reason. We think that they need to be done. And we would like to address these or focus on just the high priority to present and move forward with the Board of Education. There's no way we're going to pare down by, you know, thirty million dollars by value engineering or scope production. So, we're thinking that if we focus on our high priority elements, and that's where we build this project from. One of the big parts, that's twice. One of the big elements, or high-cost elements, is air conditioning. We've had a previous discussion about air conditioning in the district, based on some of the legislation that came out. And, you know, the total estimated cost on this slide differs from the educational cooling project that I provided to you with data, in that this eleven million dollars that it would take to do the entire district, this is for using heat pump systems or direct expansion, regular air conditioning like we have now versus the geothermal. And I'm making that recommendation because of the cost alone. The upfront cost is almost double for geothermal. Again, it's not my decision to make, but the recommendation is, if we want to do any air conditioning at all, I think we would have to proceed using air source or heat pump systems. This eleven million dollars would literally air-condition all of the spaces in every building. For the, I want to point out also that included in this price for Elsmere and Slingerlins, we would have to do an electrical upgrade. If we add any significant electrical load, which air conditioning would be, there's also a cost incorporated in that, and we did consider that in these values. So, based on conversations internally, we're proposing that we would, or we're recommending that we phase the installation of air conditioning right now in certain buildings, our known hotspots, which would be our second floors at the high school, middle school, and Elsmere. And then, recommending that we do our common areas or large gathering space, for example, gyms, cafeterias, and library media centers, and forego doing all of the buildings as a cost-saving measure. If we did that, we could use that savings to do more project elements that we wouldn't have to cut due to budget. This is a slide that is showing our elementary buildings if we were to move forward with doing that breakout, as we said, take the problem areas or known areas versus doing the entire building. I know it's tough, there's a lot of data there, but we're proposing that at Eagle, we would do the cafeteria and the gymnasium, because currently, that building is air-conditioned in its entirety, all the classrooms. So, as you can see, that's a small portion of the one point nine million dollars that it would take to do the five elementary schools. Elsmere, again, we're proposing to do the second floor classrooms, the gymnasium, cafeteria, and library media center. And as you can see, the purple there, that's our electrical upgrade that would be required to do so. Glenmont, same thing. We would do the library and the cafeteria. In the two thousand twenty-one bond, we did replace the gym air-handling equipment on the roof, and it did include air conditioning. So, you know, we kind of could take that out of consideration. So, we do have a large space at Glenmont, and the same goes for Hammergrill. Their gym is also air-conditioned. So, we do have some cooling spots available. And then, Slingerlins, it's multi-level. We have the lower level, which is, they don't like to call it the basement, but that's our lower level. We do have classrooms down there, but the main focus with our efforts has been on the ELC, which was a known hotspot. So, we've done what we can there. We've increased our ventilation, we installed window film, and we're trying to mitigate some of that high heat during our shoulder months. So, Slingerlins, again, would also need a electrical upgrade. Excuse me, I said, so here is showing the same information for the middle school and high school. Again, this shows all of the gyms at the high school, all three of the gyms. And I'm proposing that we could probably pare this two point nine million dollars down, combined for the middle school and high school by not air-conditioning gym A and gym C, and maybe only doing gym B and the cafeteria, which is where we hold our exams, and that we've had to deal with, you know, temporary air conditioning during exam months in June, exam periods in June. Same for the middle school. You know, I have both gyms, the upper gym and lower gym. I believe that we could probably not air-condition the lower gym based on the use of that building and in consultation with Mr. Klugman. So, there is some money that we can pare down even more so than what we've already done, and if the board wants to proceed in this direction. I just want to add that earlier today, we had a meeting with our project team, and, you know, we had some discussion with the architect, and he said some districts, they indicated that some districts are opting to only air-condition some of our common spaces in a building in lieu of classrooms. They, these would be our gyms, our LMCs, and our cafeterias, to be used as cooling stations and secondary teaching spaces in the event of a severe weather event. Again, I don't have data on that. This was a conversation that some folks certainly can't afford to, you know, air-condition their entire building, so they're opting to give treated spaces within the building if we have those hot days. And again, this, if we chose to only do the large spaces and not the second floors, we could use that savings to do more of the project scope elements. So, that is one thing that we're requesting, we are requesting guidance from the Board of Education, and that is to identify, to us within our school buildings, which areas you wish that we prioritize for air conditioning so that we can plan accordingly. So, of course, with any bond project or capital project, we have our challenges. I just want to bring these to light early on, instead of when we get further down the road. You know, again, the challenge, the referendum date, you know, there's pros and cons to it. Again, that's one of the things that, once we get that directive from the board, we'll proceed in either direction. You know, and right now, the economy. I was hoping those gentlemen stayed so I could get some pointers, so we could figure out what it's going to look like about a year and a half from now when we go out to bid. But, you know, we have our inflations, our tariffs, state aid. I think we're a little more certain now, a little more, but it's not, you know, definitive. Our calendar and our schedule, you know, we want to make sure that we go out and we bid and we get competitive bids so that we get the skilled labor we need to build these projects. As we saw in the last project, we did have trouble getting competitive bids just due to timing. So, we had to go back out with the auditorium. And then, we did. And then we did realize that, yes, it was the right decision, so we did well on that. And, you know, and then as we start developing this project and we start getting into that design development, we have what we call scope creep. For example, we were gonna do something in this room, wow, jeez, you know, the room next door looks just like this, why don't we do that one too? So, that's a example of scope creep. And then we have our unforeseen issues. So, we build this in, we have our contingencies built into design and our construction, but right now, it's an unknown element. And then, you know, reprioritization of the project elements over the course of our timeline. One of the, my biggest concerns, again, is we don't want a project so large that we expand into the three, four, five-year timeline. I did a eight-year once, and it didn't go well, because by the time we got done building it, we were undoing it and rebuilding it. So, it was not money well-spent, because, you know, the curriculum changed, or program changed, something changed, and we ended up spending the money twice. So, these two-to-two-and-a-half, three-year projects are what I would consider, you know, the best approach. So, in closing, our team, we respectfully request for the board approval to proceed with the proposed approach that we have identifying and advancing the high priority scope elements in support of this project. If you could just let us know that, you know, if there's medium or low priority that you feel we should amplify, then we'll move them up or down in any direction. And we're gonna work towards refining this and revising it and verifying to make sure that we can give you the best data, so that you can make the best decisions. And that is what I have. Are there any questions?
So, with just doing the high priority scope items, that puts us at the sixty-seven?
Yes.
Ish?
Seventy-two.
And if the board hasn't looked at in the updates, the entire building condition survey is there, so you can see all of the scope elements with the high, medium, and low on there?
And does that include, that sixty-seven, what part of the air conditioning project, is that the eleven million air conditioning project, or is it the five million?
That is the eleven million.
Okay, so the sixty-seven?
Is all-encompassing.
Includes eleven million for air conditioning?
Correct.
Okay, so if we trimmed that back to less air conditioning?
Yes.
That would, that would be one way to bring the cost down?
So, and again, it's embarrassing for me to say, but at this stage of the project, these are total and utter estimates.
Sure.
And we don't know what's gonna change as we progress. You know, is, you know, the last bond, the roofs skyrocketed, we couldn't get roofing materials. Then we had the steel issue. So, that is a snapshot in time of right now, this is a very good estimate. Once we put pencil to paper, we're gonna, we're gonna find out what the real cost is. So, I'm gonna be upfront and say that it will probably go up before it comes back down.
Even, understanding that it is an estimate, you said that if we didn't do those couple of gym spaces at the high school and middle school, that that would bring the number down?
Yes.
As well, do you have an idea, like, how much are we talking about?
I'm gonna do this from memory. I couldn't remember Turner, but I do remember this. So, to do the gymnasiums, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per gymnasium. So, it's not a million dollars, but, because each one has its own one unit that goes on the roof, with the exception of Gym B, that one's three-hundred-and-fifty. It's a lot more, because it's a larger space. So, for example, doing the lower, not doing the lower gym would save nearly two-hundred-thousand, because that one's in between. It's larger than the upper gym, but smaller than our Gym B. So, on average, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand per unit to air-condition.
And, I'm not sure if it's a question for you, or John, or both, but is the, that December twenty-twenty-five referendum date, is that, is that the earliest possible, like, could we, if we wanted to, could we do it in November instead of December? Like, is that an impossibility?
I can go first, real. So, our architectural team, we are prepared to do a December. I would check with them about November, but we had settled, tried to give as much time as possible, and we landed on December, because that gives us enough time to get it out to SED, get approval, and then go to bidding and contracts prior to construction season, which would be the summer of twenty-six.
Yeah.
So...
I have some concerns about, December's not a great time of year to be...
Proceedurally, you have to, remember, we have the forty-five day...
That's kinda why I was looking at you for that.
...notice your public hearings, any additional presentations in terms of what elements are being considered, what are not, coupled right with the summer months where, you know, members of the community may be out on vacation and not necessarily be interested in the project, but that may not necessarily be focused over the course of the summer. We can do anything from a calendar perspective, for sure, but it's those other pieces that are really applying next episode.
And I think there is some consideration financially that you, we spoke about.
So, just briefly, we'll get into this in additional presentations. The timing sort of impacts the issuance of long-term debt to offset whatever the project costs are. What our capital reserve status is maybe April of twenty-six versus April of twenty-seven to help finance in costs. The district does have a significant amount of long-term debt that matures in June of twenty-thirty, which is roughly forty-three million dollars that will help pay off all those long-term obligation notes. That's roughly five-point-one million dollars of debt service on the operating budget. So, I'm trying to make it, I'm sort of working our ways from his construction calendar, the district's debt service calendar, trying to find that sweet spot where we're not necessarily increasing debt service for like a one-year period until it rolls off, so we're just trying to streamline that. So, I can, looking at this very quickly, if you want to run it past our financial advisors and bond capital, see where they recommend. We can do some issuance of short-term debt as a bridge for three years until we absolutely have to go issue long-term debt. The one downfall would be paying interest, almost like an interest-only loan until such time that we issue your long-term obligation notes and you're paying principal and interest as part of your operating budget.
Lauren, John, have you, or Nick, have, how often in the past have we had to have a vote that was not at the same time as the regular May election budget vote? Going back like five, ten years?
We did one in October for the twenty-one bond. I don't recall when we went back.
The middle school auditorium, we did. It was off-cycle two. I think the bond before that was in the fall as well. We've had several that have been in the fall, usually October or early November.
Not unusual. And they were successfully passed?
Yeah. We haven't ever had it in December. We've tried to have it earlier in the fall.
Right. And again, we can, I can talk to our team and say, you know, before we go any further and the board says yea or nay, can we do November? Because I do appreciate what the considerations are for December. That's a hard, hard time.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
If we decide to do the partial AC, the second floor and the gymnasium, and then later on, five years from now, we want to air-condition the first floor, are we going to be redoubling our work? Or is there a way to create the space for the air conditioning when we're doing it all at once?
Yes, so I can answer that. So, for example, we use Elsmere, it's a small second floor, or the high school, we have the D-wing, east, west, and north, and south. If we're going to do the second floor at any of our buildings, we would incorporate the chases on the wall where we bring our refrigerant lines down on the second floor and have them ready to go for the next phase. Fortunately, that's all it is, it's refrigeration lines and electrical lines. These are ductless, so we wouldn't have ductwork running through the buildings and things like that, that would be extremely cost-prohibitive and a real challenge to set up for a Phase Two. So, the answer to your question is yes, we would consider that, and when we build the chase to do the second floor, that chase, we locate it so that we can bring it down and make it applicable to do the first floor.
So, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not losing efficiency by doing it staged as opposed to all at once?
No, and that's kinda like why I'm kinda guiding us toward the heat pumps, they're not going away. It's a reliable air conditioning and heating system, there is funding available for it. The geothermal could be problematic for the future, because we would have dead-ended pipes unless we turned it into a loop, and then we've had sediment problems and filtration problems. So, if we're going to not do the entire district, my recommendation would be to go with air-source heat pumps versus any other. And I just want to put a caveat in there, not to confuse folks, but Eagle, for example, their gymnasium has a air handler now that provides heat only. That is a little different. The only thing we have to do is put a coil in there and a condenser on the roof. We don't have to replace anything, we don't have to do anything with that. Now, the high school is, we put the condenser on the roof and a whole bunch of evaporators, one in each room, so it's a little different there. So, when I say direct expansion, some of these, we can just pop a coil in and we're good to go. The others are where we really, and you can see the cost, it rises, because we're gonna have a variable refrigerate system that has refrigeration lines that has to go to each room in the building.
And the heat pump system that you're speaking of, how is that rated environmentally, energy-efficient-wise?
Well, I will say that that's what is all over the place right now with NYSERTA, and that's why they're providing substantial funding for it. Is it more efficient than geothermal? The answer is no. However, the upfront cost and the serviceability of it is much better than geothermal. So, it's very comparable, comparable. The direct expansion or what we have currently is less efficient than the heat pump systems that are coming out. That's another thing that we have to take into consideration, they're changing the refrigerant again, which is gonna drive costs up. And we talked about that in the educational cooling project, we don't know what they're gonna select and what the impact is gonna be on the new refrigeration. So, and we're struggling with that now internally with our HVAC mechanics, we have systems that are, I don't want to get in the weeds, but R-22, which was fifteen years ago, well, that's no more. Everything has to be R-ten, R-410 or better, and I've got, there's so many, I get them all confused, but the bottom line is, when we have a piece of equipment fail, it's not like I can just slap a new condenser on it. I have to replace the piping, the expansion tank, expansion valves, and the condensers, because it won't support the new refrigerant.
Just one quick question. I think I know the answer, but when we start talking about the high priority, medium, and low, that, the high priority that we're talking about here that made up your recommendation in terms of the elements, that high priority is the high priority from all three of the other categories, life, safety?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes, and it's in conjunction with the stakeholders, the stakeholders being the administration and the principals. For example, when we go through, you know, past projects, we've kinda just presented it to the board with no prioritization on it. And we felt that that's a little rough for all of you to try to figure out, well, do we really need a roof? How do I know we need a roof? You know, unless we tell you. So, this time, we kinda established a priority list based on what we know and our knowledge, and then we presented it to the folks, and we've changed them. Some were high, some were low, some went from medium to low, some went up and down. So, we're asking our stakeholders and our administration to help us with the prioritization, but the majority of it has already been established. An example would be, our fax room at the high school has an asbestos-containing material floor. It's in excellent condition, we just know it happens to be hazardous material. It's sealed, it's waxed, it's in excellent, it's been inspected, our HARA report's coming very soon, but we know it's there, and yes, it would look a lot better if it looked like this. Is that a high priority? So, we say, not really, because it's not a bad floor. You take the same floor material and it's chipped, every time you slide a desk across it, you chip the floor, and that becomes a hazard, and that would be a high priority floor.
Thank you.
What do you need from us tonight?
Okay, so tonight, what we're looking for is, are we on the right path with our recommendation to, let's focus our attention on refining our high priority elements? Is that the direction that you want us to continue on? Because as I said, we're never, not never, we're not going to achieve by including the low and medium priorities right now, we're not gonna achieve that sixty million dollars. And that's a second question, is sixty million the one, is that our spot?
Right, is there a threshold, like, do you want to say we definitely don't want to go above this, or is there a range you're comfortable with? Because that does make a difference in even the high, like, the air conditioning, you know, I think we said today, we were talking about it, doing it in stages makes sense since we could add on to it later on to allow to get some of the other high priority items included, but we do need to know kind of fifty to sixty, forty to fifty, to finish refining those areas. Is it sixty to seventy, like?
And I don't need that tonight, but it's for your consideration.
I would say generally around like that, I mean, around that sixty, well, when it starts to get higher, too much higher than that, I have concerns. I know in the past, like, there've been a couple, there were a couple times where the district did very, very large projects, and they become a mealie and they drag out.
And not, and you spend a lot more money.
And I don't want to put us in that position, and I feel like we've done better over the past bond projects, doing slightly smaller, kind of trying to chunk it. But I get that with rising costs, you know, the numbers maybe that we were working with last time, that's not gonna be feasible to do the same kind, same amount of work, just because things cost more. But I do, I mean, I would say prioritizing, focusing on those high priority items, and I would think that, you know, staging the air conditioning project, because just, I know it was just an estimate, but by doing just the, those kind of key parts in the building, that trims that down by about six million dollars.
By like six million, yeah, exactly.
And I would think that, I would think that having some of those bigger spaces available in the buildings to provide, you know, cooling spots, and then getting those second floor, like, really hot zones.
Those are the, what Nick presented on a few other times about those are really the hot spots.
The spots we know are unbearable.
And Holly, if I may, real quickly, the, what was interesting is, you know, some of the principals, Hammergrill, Glenmont, they're single-story, and they didn't really experience, of course, when it was ninety-five degrees and ninety-five percent humidity, it was uncomfortable, but for the most part, they conceded that, you know, our buildings aren't really that bad. And we did have that, and I call it an anomaly, it just happened to coincide with our exam week.
Yeah.
And it's not normal. So, we considered all that, and that's how we broke that down, and then we really got into discussion about where do we really need to make it tenable for our students to learn? And we chose or recommended the second floors, which there's three buildings that have them, and they've all been defined previously as our known hotspots, and then the potential for our large or common areas to make them cooling or secondary teaching spaces. You know, you just have that one spot that, for whatever reason, the sun is hitting on it, hey, we can go to the gymnasium, shut the partition, and we'll teach in there today. Or we can go to the LMC or the cafeteria. So, you know, we realized that there could be some substantial savings there. We also kicked around, and I saw John kinda put his hand over, you know, we put all this air conditioning in, we also have to evaluate what our operating costs are gonna be in the future for the electricity and maintenance of it, so. And right now, again, we don't know what the future holds, so we can estimate. And then the second thing I would like to say is, we're right on the cusp at sixty million. That means about fifty million would be hard costs. And again, that's just a rough rule of thumb. So, we just demonstrated in two thousand twenty-one that we can do forty-six million. So we just demonstrated in 2021 that we can do 46 million, okay? And that puts us right on that cusp in two years. And that puts us on the cusp of, can we do this project in two years? Or is it two full years and one summer? Or now are we starting to expand into the three-year, the four-year, and so on? And it's really what we want to do. And that's also going to tell us what our, we'll work to the budget associated with that. So it's two things, our schedule and our budget. If you say it's 60 million, we will do everything in our power to make sure that we can fit that in. We wouldn't just say, okay, we're doing 60 million and can't fit it. So we may have to opt to say, we'll have to do that in a future project. For example, if we were going to do a whole wing of classrooms, there's just no way for the lack of swing space and the time it takes to do an entire wing. So that will help us, I think, help you and the rest of the board to offer these decisions.
Do other people have thoughts?
I appreciate all the work you put into this. I think it makes sense to focus on the high priorities. I don't, you know, obviously love the idea of a December vote because it's inconvenient for people, but you laid out the reasoning why that seems like it's the best time to do it in terms of, so that we can start in the summer and not lose an entire year. So I would support that. If a November work, November vote would work timing-wise, that would be better, but I understand we don't have time for that.
Yeah, I agree. I think the 60 million range, high priority, would be the best place to start from there.
I have confidence in the facilities, folks, and the committee, so, you know, I think it makes sense to focus on the high priority. That just seems logical to me. I share some concerns about the December vote, but I think that's something that, you know, we can address, you know, in terms of outreach and, you know, and sort of publicizing it and make sure that the, you know, the concern is that folks are not going to be paying attention to it. And I think at least there's some kind of steps you can take to try to at least minimize that impact. But in terms of the focus of the facilities committee and the goals here, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I, very thorough presentation as always, and I think you're on the right track.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, only now is the time to come up to the microphone. And if you could please state your name.
My name is Frank Kuwak, and off-topic, I'm glad I don't have his job. I'm here to talk about the ballot that was used in yesterday's voting. There was an error on that ballot, and I think that because of that error, voting on the capital reserve proposition should be annulled and a new vote on that proposition take place. Here's why I say that. Before the election, I found out what would be on the ballot and knew that four propositions were on the ballot covering specifically the district and library budgets, school bus purchases, and a reserve fund for future large costs. Thus, I knew what to expect when I looked at that ballot. On the ballot I got from the school and library, budget items were clearly presented, budget and school, let me get this right, on the ballot I got, the school and library budget items were clearly presented, as was the school bus purchase. But when I got to the last item, which should have been about capital reserves, it said instead "school bus" and some other words. And I couldn't quite figure that out. And I checked to be certain, and I was seeing two things that said "school bus," because I'd already voted on the school bus item. I double-checked that I wasn't going crazy, school bus was on both items. I was reasonably certain that school buses were not on that reserve proposition. I'd never seen the word there. So the question was, where it came from? I said, I don't know. I voted no. Came back home, I looked up the ballot on the website, the sample ballot, and that sample ballot said that the proposition was the 2025 capital reserve fund. It did not say "school bus." So I sent an email, I guess, to Mr., I forget your name, Mr. McPhillips, who very nicely replied and said he had moved it on to the legal department to see what they said. Because I suggested that that made that item on the ballot, you couldn't do it, you did it wrong. I was very surprised this morning when I saw all the budget items passed without any reference to the fact that there was a flawed ballot. Because the heading to this ballot did not correctly or even closely come to describing what the proposition was for, I think the voting on the proposition should be annulled and a new vote taken next year, I guess, whenever. Many people thought it was about school buses, and it was nothing about school buses in there. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item six, action items. A is our resolution to certify the 2025, 2026 school district budget vote results. If I could have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through 19.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. And E, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come up to the microphone.
Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Wednesday, June 4th, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and then we have our 10-year teacher reception for 2025 at 6:30, and then reconvening to open session at 7:00. On Monday, June 9th, here at the high school at 5:00, we have an audit committee meeting, and then at 6:00, we have a policy committee meeting. And then on Wednesday, June 18th, we have a regularly scheduled board meeting anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening to open session at 7:00. And then on Thursday, June 26th, at 2:00, that is the class of 2025 graduation at the MVP Arena. And the morning of Thursday, June 26th, Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the eighth grade moving up ceremony, which will be here at the high school.
Correct.
And that is usually at 8:30, 9:00?
Yes, I think it usually starts around 8:45, but it's pretty much on that schedule.
So that would be a busy day moving on to graduations. We do need to go back into executive session to discuss a contractual issue and a student matter. If I could have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. So you guys pick stupid friends, you do not need to wait around, you are free to go, you can come up and just make sure you sign out before you go.